Good evening. Good evening, and thank you for attending the Southeast Delco School District Board of School Directors Committee of the Whole Meeting scheduled for Thursday, April 18th, 2024. Dr. Sanchez, welcome for your first school board meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
And thank you. So I'm going to kick it off to you for our committee reports.
So today's board meeting will be my first, so I'm looking forward to being part of the conversation. I am, however, going to be leaning on Mr. Butler to help facilitate some of the discussion. We are going to start with the education committee report. Mr. Butler, are we inviting somebody to the front?
Yes, is Dr. Laurie present? And is Dr. Gibbs Tapper coming up first?
Good evening. All right, so for our first topic for education, we have item number one, which is approve the confidential settlement agreement for student ID number listed on the document. We also have two E S Y contracts for two students who go to approved private schools. Their student ID numbers are listed on there as well. The fourth education item is to approve the swim contract between Briar Cliff Swim Club and Southeast Delco School District for the Extended School Year Program of 2024. We do have the dates that are attached. We normally go to the swimming is a part of the E S Y program for our elementary as well as high school students on Thursdays from eight to 11:00. We also are asking the board to please approve the summer school dates for Monday, June 24th, 2024 to Monday, July 29th, 2024, and that those dates also are extended for E S Y 21st Century Title I and Credit Recovery Programs. The program is a Monday through Thursday program. There will be no program on July 4th, which is a Thursday, but June 24th to July 29th, Monday through Thursday, is the E S Y dates as well as Century Title I and Credit Recovery dates. Going to hand it over to Dr. Laurie at this time.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just a couple of quick things to continue the education items. Item number five is the continued request that from the Academy Park High School to the School Board of Directors to continue its support of the after-prom activities that occur after our senior prom at Academy Park High School. So that outlines item number five. We have two out-of-state field trip requests. One is very close, but it still constitutes an out-of-state request because it's in New Jersey. It's to Adventure Aquarium from our Academy Park High School. And a second request comes from also Academy Park High School to the Medieval Times location, which is in Hanover, Maryland. Next up, we have our monthly field trip additions that were added to the list. As we have every month, these are locations that were requested by teachers that approved by their building principals before we can proceed with fully authorizing any trip requests. We add those sites to the monthly agenda and the monthly updates. So those are appearing in your items there. And last but certainly not least is the continuation of our utilization of frontline educational and professional development management systems. This is our reporting tool that we utilize to ensure that our teachers, when we do professional development, all that information and credits are housed electronically and then uploaded to P D E so teachers continue to get their act forty-eight credits. And that's through a consortium pricing agreement with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. Any questions?
Did you receive a request for, because I don't see it on the list to be approved, for the Delta Hotel for the upcoming technology symposium by the Naval Engineers? And will we be able to vote on that by next week?
Yes, it is. We updated the approved list and was added. Additional list was provided. It should be uploaded on there. But I do have that. It was added to the April listing.
Okay, so it'll be listed to vote on next week? Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just have a couple of questions. One about field trips. So is there a policy about the procedures on how employees request field trips?
Absolutely. So all field trips, there's approximately about a 10 to 13 step process. All field trips always originate at the school level. So for example, a teacher might be doing a unit of study or a lesson that might be conducive to zoology, and it might be in line with something that they're covering. At that given time, the teacher might look ahead and say, you know what? This would benefit from it in person experience. We are in the cradle of many different opportunities, and we might want to go to the building. If the first stop that that teacher would go is the building principal. The building principal would review the request, either support or deny the request, and then send it at that point to central office. But yes, there is a process that starts at the teacher level, then goes to the principal level, then goes to the central office level, and it goes through various stages of approval from there.
Okay, and then the other question I have is transportation when it comes to trips. Does the district provide transportation for your costs for every trip, or how does that work?
There's a cost for everything. That's a great question. If the district can provide transportation, principals are always asked to check with our transportation providers first to see if our district buses can provide service for that specific event. There are certain requirements that transportation has to put in place to ensure that district operations continue to run, as well as charter and cap of school buses that we are obligated and required to do. So for example, if a trip cannot operate within a certain set of parameters, the teacher and the principal would have to start looking for external providers to ensure that transportation happens. But yes, the district does provide transportation services, but as with everything, there's a cost. And after all those things are worked out, and if the actual site and date is approved, then the packet gets approved, but then the principal, the teacher, work with our business office to ensure that all the financial aspects are tied up before the trip.
So the next question I have, I don't know if it's for you or for Mr. Butler. So buses, so we use our school buses. Is the trip free for students? Meaning if we need to use the yellow school bus, will we be charging students on top of whatever fee they might have to pay in order to go on a trip?
No, the way that it works is that the transportation itself, anytime that occurs, there's a journal entry that will charge the school facilities account, the principal's account, and transfer it over to the transportation account number.
So if I need to buy a coach bus or a bus where, I'm going to call them coach buses because that's what they are, if you have to go outside our district, is there a fee for that bus?
That would be the school that would, if the school had to make that arrangement, that fee would, it would be through fundraising or student activities.
Okay, so does the district pay the cost?
So we would pay it first, and then we'd be reimbursed from the school. Whether it was a fundraiser.
So it would be part of their budget line, out of their school budget line?
Or through student activities and a fundraising initiative.
Could the bird get a copy of the procedures for those trips? Because for me, it seems like there has been a lot of confusion. So it would be a lot easier for me and the rest of the board to read it, and then we understand it and to make the judgment financially. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Is the process for requesting trips and the entire process an online process? Or are there forms that need to be filled out that are physical forms?
They're physical forms. So they are P D S, but there are forms that need to be signed and whatnot. So they are signed and then you scan it digitally. Very few come through the office that are actual paper. They mostly are scanned, signed, and then sent through the central office.
Is there ever an opportunity for us to eliminate the scanned, signed part? Because that still requires someone to print it out, sign it, then scan it in versus submitting it all electronically in a place where everything is controlled and we can see the process from start to finish all in one?
We could absolutely look at a docuSign kind of opportunities.
And would there be an opportunity to look into our current systems to eliminate the need for parents to have to fill out such a complex permission slip for the trips? Because the trip form that I filled out required a lot of information that I've already provided the district through the emergency contact information. So I wasn't quite sure why I was being asked for all of that information again. And I'm not quite sure how that, when people are on, when teachers and things are on trips, how are they keeping in touch with all of that information, all those forms that we filled out? Do they have to keep the physical forms with them throughout the trip? Or are they, like if they don't, then like, if there's a way to log into like Power School and just simply pull the information from Power School? Because that's information right there in hand, and less chances of this paper didn't get back to me, that paper didn't. If we can just simply log in, permission given, there you go. You've got all my info, my contact info, and it's a direct line, less chances for anything to get messed up.
Sure, and I appreciate the feedback. The first thing, a docuSign, we can absolutely look at streamlining and digitalizing the approval process to include docuSign or a similar entity that can work with Mr. De Oriio to make sure that we're in place with any kind of signatures that are required. The permission slips, it's a one-page document, and the majority of the information on their emergency contact information, health provider information, and that's meant to be a physical packet that the trip organizer takes with them on the trip in case of God forbid an emergency. And without getting into specifics, even this year, that did, that was required where there was a medical emergency on a field trip. The provider had, or the trip organizer had the packet right in front of them, the one-page permission slip, and they were able to immediately go down the emergency contact list. We want to make sure that if there is an emergency, that we're able to quickly ensure that the person that's on the trip has all the information that they need, including emergency medical information. And sadly, the unfortunate event if somebody does need to be transported to a medical facility. The rest of the packet, that would be the only form that the parent would have to fill out in order to go on the actual field trip. Then we also ask that the schools keep hard copies in their building for a period of time after the trip, just in case the need arises to show that there was a proper authorization given for the field trip.
Like I definitely understand the need for that emergency contact information. I'm just trying to find the best way to get that information and to keep it. Because if I provided you something on that form, that should also be in the system somewhere because God forbid something happened when he's in class that it was written on the form, but you didn't know what was happening in the class. Versus also, shouldn't, if you have that information in the class, wouldn't the teacher be able to pull that information to have that?
Oh, absolutely. But the teacher may not have electronic means while they're on the road.
Which is why I agree. I think having a better format for it so that instead of it just being like a bunch of different papers. Because again, that, I remember when we went to Seabglide, there was like a whole, she had a whole bunch of stuff to keep track of, including all of those papers. Unfortunately, there was a spill of alcohol, but not rubbing alcohol, rubbing alcohol. Let me clear that way up. Rubbing alcohol spilled in the bag, and some of the forms that we needed for the event had gotten covered, and it got messed up and hard to read and all that. So like my fear is that's important information, and I just want to make sure that we've got this in the best possible format to keep it safe, but also to prevent anything from happening. There could be a page that gets left. It could be just literally anything. But if you had it in a, like now, if I had a file, well, even if it was a binder, like a field trip binder that we had that was a standardized binder that went out with all that stuff on it. I mean, that's fine too, but like, where it pulls information directly from Power School, there's my list, there's my contact list, there's my everything, there's the people who have checked it. All the information is in that, because the other part of it is, if you're looking at that form, my handwriting is nice and neat. My husband's handwriting, quite difficult to read. In a medical emergency, I would be super upset if I got a form back and I can't read what the person wrote. Is that a six? Is that a seven? Who am I calling? Because it's a physical form, you know what I mean? Like I shouldn't be writing in something where I may not recognize what that means. If I'm trying to get in touch in an emergency situation, I need to know exactly what your medical condition is. And if I can't read what you wrote, that's going to cut down on that efficiency. But if I can read what you typed, then it's all in a format, easy to read, nice and steady. That's my only feedback with that, because when I got that form, I had to like, my handwriting is a little big, on the bigger side. So I was like trying to micro-write everything into those small boxes, and I was like, oh my God, I'm redoing work I did in September. Like, use that. So I'm just trying to say, is there a way, I know that when I spoke with Dr. Ryan, we talked about that, and he mentioned that Power School may have that capability, but he had, they had to look into it.
So I can talk about Power School because I use it at my school. So one, I don't even know if we have the capability, if we had that, if we purchased that part of it.
We did not.
That would be, yeah, now you're a doctor, Dr. Butler. That would be Dr. Butler. Number two is, is the information at Power School accurate and correct?
Well.
And then number three is, I understand your questioning about the permission slips. For me, as a teacher, it gives me liability. Like I have comfort and liability because some students like to sign their parents' names still. I didn't know they still were doing that, but hey, fourth graders are doing it, second graders, hey. So that paper holds the teacher and the parents accountable. Just a suggestion, what I used to do is, I'm very, if you have great rapport with your students and families, then you already have their updated contact list, right? And then you already know what the medical conditions are. So it's like a twofold question.
Well, like that's great for when I have like a smaller class, but now if I got like a, if I'm taking a big class trip.
But then you should have, there should be adults in that class trip that know those students.
Agreed. I'm not in any way, please make sure, I want to make sure I'm clear. I am not in any way, shape, or form saying that having that information is not imperative. It is 100,000% imperative to have that information. It's more of the unifying of that information. Just like when I get that card that I fill out every year, we used to go back and forth about which one of us would fill out the emergency contact card. My handwriting is neat, but hard to fit onto that tiny little card. My husband's handwriting will fit on that card, but good on you if you can read it. So if an emergency happens, I mean, I love, I love you so much, but yeah, your handwriting. So if I get a form from a parent, and I'm like, I don't know what it is. It's very difficult. So that's why if we're moving to a system where this information is entered into a system, a database, where if I need to pull that database information. Now, I am a person who does like paper, so I would probably, prior to the trip, print that out to have it on me, but it would be in a printed format of all the information in a legible format, so I'm not reading handwriting, I'm not relying on.
So you like a Google form?
Like even a Google form, something like that. But just saying, offering options that were, that are uniform allow for full information because also you've got a very tiny spot for entering information in, and if someone's situation is a little more complex, that little spot's not going to get it. But just another way, another method of keeping this information clear and concise, utilizing some of the technology that we already have in place to kind of build this out and move forward with technology as opposed to relying on paper, which is infallible, like.
So point very well taken. I'm taking notes of to-dos.
Go ahead, go ahead, doctor.
Yeah, I'm done.
So if you would allow Dr. Laurie, Dr. Ryan, and I to take an attempt to figure out how we use the technology that we have to minimize what parents have to provide. But I too believe that it's important that contact information be asked regularly. The reality is that many times those numbers change. And if we're on a field trip and we need to contact a parent or emergency contact, it's important that we have their most current information. But could we figure out how we minimize what you have to report? Absolutely. So point well taken.
Even with that thought right there, where you were talking about keeping it current, if I have to go into the system to approve the field trip, that should automatically flash my contact info, and I would immediately need to.
We would, I would hate to limit a student's experience on the fact that a parent, for whatever reason, is not able to go into a system to access whatever form. So often the paper is the safest way to make sure we get an authorization for a kid to go. We don't want a kid to stay behind because we didn't get a response from a parent or guardian.
You have never gotten a permission slip the day of an event where the parent is like, what is this?
Okay, I'm sorry. Dr. DiOrio, you were doctor the day too.
I think it's a great suggestion where you had indicated digitizing and having a paper backup because thinking about this, my concern would be if it's only digitized, and for some reason, the laptop or whatever is not working on that field trip, we've got problems. So I think there should be a digitized plus backup paperwork. I'm not saying both have to be done simultaneously, but I do think there should be some sort of backup just in case the technology, which always is wonderful when it works. Thank you.
Just to be quickly clear, when I mentioned a docuSign approach, that was more in line with our inter-district procedures of signing internally, not necessarily encouraging our families to have docuSign accounts by any means. And just as a last point out, it is never the school district, any principal, myself, or anybody in this district's ever intent to create more work for parents. What we do want though is to make sure that in the event of emergency, which has happened this year, that our teachers do not panic, that they have the information right in front of them, they're not worried about technology, and they can look at a paper and go right down the list in case a child, God forbid, ever needs emergency medical attention. So that's the only intent from there, but I would absolutely work any way that we can make a process better for our kids and our families.
Vice President Barry.
Thank you. So I think I have a twofold question that maybe half you, half Mr. DiOrio. So last year, we had a last-minute addition of the Collingdale Firehouse for the kindergarteners, you remember? And it was like, oh my God, are we going to be able to do this? We don't have another board meeting before we vote. And at that time, I had asked if we could kind of come up with like more of a standard list. Like why don't we add the other firehouses while we're at it, just to make sure that doesn't happen again? So my question is, how do I word this and not be long-winded? Can we add locations before we have 100% of the details? Like for example, the reason I had asked you about the symposium, my child's going, and the actual, it's a four-day event, but the date that we were assigned didn't come to the teacher until very late. So would a teacher be able to submit approval for a location before they have the dates and the times and all of that? And then legally, do we act, not the district, but does the board actually have to vote on adding every single location? Is there a legal reason for that?
So I'll hit the first one, and then I will turn it over to our legal expert for the second part of that. The first part, typically what happens at the site, we ask for six weeks' advance notice for this reason, for in-state trips that are not ordered. So if a site was not considered and did not get raised to your attention, we ask for six weeks to allow for that process in case it happened the day after we met as a board meeting. They'll give us ample time to put it on the agenda and plan. Typically, what we do is as soon as a principal authorizes and approves a site and says, yes, this is a site that my school and my student body could go to, and it's going to be an educationally or PBIS-centric event, we typically put that on the agenda, and we do not process the paperwork until the board votes. So right now, there are several locations that are on your approved list for consideration this month that are sitting right now, waiting board approval. As soon as the board approves it and they review it, we will then move the process forward and immediately go from there. Behind the scenes, what happens a lot of times, teachers will investigate locations, they'll investigate dates, they'll contact their transportation depot to see if buses can be penciled in, not confirmed, but penciled in. In the event that when the board does vote, we can then immediately go and go through with the approval process. That's for a short timeframe trip. As for the legal implications of that, I would assume that would be grounded policy, and that if the board wishes to change said policy, that would be something that would, the board would have to decide, but I defer.
Yeah, we would, of course, have to conform to the present policy or amend it. But trying to respond to your question, sometimes, for example, a trip may be on the approved list by the board, but for some reason, transportation is not available, and so the trip doesn't take place. Or for some reason, there was a problem with the contract for the facility that's going to be sponsoring the trip or entertaining the students, and therefore, upon review, it was decided that it would not be appropriate to have that trip. I think those examples are rare, but I think in answer to your question, we could put, the board could approve a trip as, as as far as a list is concerned, but that would be dependent upon the administration's approval of the final details and my approval, if submitted to me of a contract, if there was a contract for such a trip. So I think you could put a trip on a list that is not exactly fleshed out as far as dates and that sort of thing, but that would have to be, you have to be relying upon the administration to make sure that that trip is appropriate before it takes place.
I think you answered the part of the question was for Dr. Laurie. So I understand administration needs to approve it. You need to approve contracts. Does the board actually have to vote and create this list every month? Is there a legal reason for creating that list? If administrators are, building administrators, central administrators, and the solicitor are all reviewing and approving it. Is it like a Pennsylvania law? Is it in the school code? Do we need, does the board, like I'm just asking, do we need to do this part of the process?
It's a matter of policy. I mean, I guess is it, is there a law that says that you must do this? No. Is it, is it possible to 101% rely simply on the administration, and the board has no knowledge of any input as far as approval of trips? Is that illegal? I would say not. Is it something that I would recommend? Absolutely not. The board should weigh in on the trips. The board should approve the trips. The board should have knowledge of the trips. But if a trip takes place that for some reason the board was not approved, did not approve of, and the administration thinks it's appropriate, we could always ratify it after the fact. That should not present the children from experiencing an educational opportunity, in my opinion, simply because that has not had the opportunity to come before the board. I don't know if Dr. Sanchez would agree or not, but.
Agree 100% with what you just said.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes, the symposium, you said six weeks, correct? You said six weeks, you need information? This symposium is being run by the Navy, so their time is a whole lot different than ours. And your pattern and their pattern, there's also a thing in the law called exceptions. And please give us an exception on this one. I mean, our kids need to have this.
So just if the board is willing to discuss and allow the administration to ratify locations, that's something again that Mr. DiOrio would have to weigh into. I would just remind the board that that has been presented before, and that was unfavorable as an outcome. So we have done that, and that was unfavorable, which is why when these last-second things come up, I try to be as transparent and open as possible, and I send information out to the board as soon as I get them to make sure that the board is aware. But it has happened in the past where we came up to a trip where it would have to be ratified, and that was not something that was in agreement with the board at that time. Just for transparency sake.
So I have two questions. One question is about this trip procedure. You're saying it's six weeks. Bob, question is, if I don't have the exact date for the trip, but I know where the trip is going, I know the location of the trip, but they have not given me a date yet, could we still approve it? but they have not given me a date yet, could we still approve it pending the finalized date?
Yes.
So, Mr., um, now you're Mr., Dr. Lowry. So, Dr. Lowry, so it is up to the, uh, the employees of the district to do their due diligence and if they have notice of a trip prior to this, over six weeks and wait till the last minute, you're telling me administrators are, administrators are still approving them? Even though they didn't follow the process?
Administrators are submitting, they're approving the location and they're sending to the central office. Central office then makes a determination that the trip can even happen based upon the board approval deadlines. What we won't do is if there's a situation where a last-second thing came up and students would be impacted negatively, that's when you have received emails from me saying that this, this instance will occur before our voting meeting. Can we proceed forward with this opportunity with your approval? And we have done that.
And then, um, two more questions. The other question I have is, um, chaperones. How are chaperones identified for trips?
Chaperones?
The reason why I'm asking because there's a trip for eleventh graders and I didn't even know anything about it as a parent.
So the building teacher and the principal would absolutely go through and determine chaperones or put a, a call out for chaperones for a certain event. Um, there is a chaperone approval process. And again, that was another entity that was asked to be cleaned up and to have a streamlined process to ensure that we have the appropriate PA clearances on file for every chaperone that's attending trips. So that was something that we worked with our former HR director and then currently Mrs. Woolley to ensure that we have a process and a procedure for review of chaperones. But to answer your question, Ms. Monrobit said that would absolutely come from the building and chaperones. We ask for a ten-to-one ratio of adults to students on any field trip. That could be a combination of, of Southeast Delco staff or parents that have gone through the appropriate vetting process.
Okay, so one more, because we're, I just wanna make sure that we're... So does every employee know the process of, one, how to submit these field trips appropriately within a six-week timeframe?
There's a stepper. I just happen to have him up here because we had two out-of-state trips. There's a checklist at the front of the packet that just gives a step-by-step of the information that requesting and the flow of information that should occur.
And so each employee knows where to locate this document?
Every, every employee that's considering a field trip would go to their building principal and the building principal or building secretary will provide the trip packet. So for this year, I mean, we've received a lot of trip packets. Um, so I have, um, I haven't seen an issue where somebody submitted information without a packet, at least this year.
Okay, and I can't remember my other question because I was interrupted. Um, if I have another question, I will bring it back to you. But, um, I would, I would also, if possible, just a suggestion in the packet is to notify parents of when trips are.
Parents should absolutely be notified.
Cause parents might want a chaperone.
We will absolutely communicate that and make sure that our, when information goes out from building principals, that that's included.
Um, that, oh, the other question is, uh, extracurricular, how do they fill out, uh, trips?
Extracurricular in the sense of...
Extracurricular activities within the district, how do they fill out? Cause they're not employees of ours, so how would that happen?
Give me an example. I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure I answered the question.
Um...
So are you talking about like,
What?
At East, like, uh...
So, so the musical, I know that the musical takes a trip pretty much every year to go and view the, usually the show that we're producing, that we're doing, they'll go to one of the theaters in the area that's seeing it.
But they're still employees, so...
So that would, that should go through the same process?
That should go through the same process.
Yeah.
So, uh, PTAs, any of those kinda extracurricular, any, uh, not athletic stuff that wouldn't be by an employee but has somebody else being the lead on it?
The athletics department, obviously, because of the nature of support schedules, has a, has a fully different process for, for students.
So for, let's take Knights, the Knights, the one Nate, uh, Principal, uh, yeah, Knights, the Saturday thing you used to have.
The Rising Scholars.
Rising Scholars. So they would still fill out the same trip form, correct?
That's still employees.
If, if a, if a Southeast Delco is sponsoring an event and kids are getting on a bus and going somewhere and it is a, a sanctioned event by the school district, a trip packet should be filled out, yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. Okay.
And, um, I know in, in the past, a Southeast Delco teacher or staff member has always been the originator or somebody that is a Southeast Delco employee has been the originator of said request.
Okay. Oh, there it goes, my last one, is number five. Can you tell me how many students attended this last year?
I don't have the numbers off the top. I have the requests from the school, but I don't have the med.
I can't answer that.
Can someone from the school tell me, one of the principals, assistant principals? How many students attended the after prom?
I can answer that.
I'm, I'm sorry? So what administrators would be there this year? None? Okay, Ms., uh, Vice President Perry, how many students attended last year?
So I actually can answer both of those questions, even though the perfect answer's not to the second one yet. So, um, Ms. Lorraine Bowman is a senior parent and she is the coordinator for the after prom. Last year, it was Nicole Gamble. Her son was a senior. We did have fifty kids sign up to attend. Thirty-five showed. Um, and after we shut the door for the evening, we did call the parents of all of the students who did not show and it turned out that they went home because they were tired. So we did confirm that we knew where all of the children were. Um, this year, Lorraine plans on reaching out to all of the administrators, which she may have done already with an invitation for them attend, to attend. Last year, we were not able to get an Academy Park administrator to volunteer. So Sharon Hill's assistant principal and Harris's assistant principal volunteered and they were the administrators at the event. Before the pandemic, there was always an Academy Park assistant principal there and the principal who actually ran it before the pandemic was, I believe her name was, um, Michelle McGlynn. So there used to always be an Academy Park assistant principal there, but since it's not a, it wasn't required by the last principal or by the assistant superintendent last year, we did have to look for volunteers. And luckily, Mr. Ruane and Mr. Moore's stepped up to do that. Um, and then also, I'd like to share a few more things about the after-prom planning for this year, if you don't mind.
Okay, so I have more questions. So you're telling me that our current assistant superintendent did not require any administrator from the Academy Park High School to attend an event that they were having in their building? I just wanna make sure I was correct.
By the time he was asked to do so, um, the principal had already informed the assistant principals that they were not to attend. He, he, uh, he, he's, he emailed the coordinator of the after-prom with all of the assistant principals on the email and told her that none of his assistant principals would be attending and he would not ask them to.
And so the assistant sup, excuse me?
So Jeff, so Dr. Ryan stepped up and asked other administrators to attend and that was how we got Mr. Moore's and Mr. Ruane.
Okay, thank you. Uh, did you have a question? I saw you. But go ahead. Thank you.
Not a question, but I will be attending.
So, and I have a lot of other great details to share about how the planning's been going so far this year, if you wouldn't mind. Um, so this is the second year in a row we have received a five-hundred donation from each municipality in the school district. Collingdale just voted on Tuesday night, so we are expecting that check soon. Falkorf, Sharon Hill, and Darby Township have already mailed in their payments. Uh, we had an amazing fundraiser at Rita's and I do wanna thank our Academy Park administration for showing up and volunteering with the kids. Um, I love when our high schoolers volunteer and then tell us they had fun. They did raise two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars from that fundraiser, plus an additional seventy-five dollars in cash. They had a pizza with a purpose event at Dino's that did not do really well because it was the day before Easter, but I believe we raised about a hundred-and-twenty dollars from that. There will be another pizza with a purpose event at Dino's on Friday, May tenth. Um, anything you order from Dino's, if you just say Academy Park, after-prom, or home and school, they will donate twenty percent of your delivery or pickup order to the after-prom. Also, on Friday, May third, um, which I know is the same day as the junior prom, but from seven-thirty to ten-thirty at Stinger's Restaurant in Secane, there will be a adult-only, twenty-one and over fundraiser with drinks and food included, raffle baskets. Tickets are forty dollars at the door. We are looking for additional raffle basket donations. And last year, we planned that event in just seven days and raised sixteen-hundred dollars, so we're hoping to do a lot better this year. And also, I just got word today that, um, one of our volunteers, Mr. Kraheim, was able to work with facilities and Academy Park administration and we will be holding a Mother's Day weekend car wash on Saturday, May eleventh, outside of Academy Park. Um, and I'm hoping to have the prices and the times for that to be able to be announced by next week's meeting.
Thank you, Vice President Perry. Can you tell me how much the, uh, the barrels donated?
Five-hundred dollars each and also Darby Township gave five-hundred dollars as well.
So Sharon Hill, Falkorf, and Collingdale?
Yes, and Darby Township.
Yes, okay. Um, just to have a conversation, you can sit down, it's gonna be a conversation. Unless any other board member has anything for Dr. Lowry. His legs probably fall down.
Thank you.
You wanna go first? Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, the number was thirty-five last year?
Thirty-five. It was thirty-five, but to be fair...
So we're gonna say thirty-two to make it even.
Well, to be fair, the kids last year had never seen an after-prom because since they had been in high school, there had not been an after-prom. So like our current seniors now, they were the freshmen, the freshmen that were virtual.
Right, I understand.
So last year's seniors never saw it.
What I'm looking at is, you're looking at seven thousand dollars that I see right off the top of my head and you're still raising money. Um, there's a lot of people that didn't get invited, didn't get asked to donate money. And for thirty-five kids, that's two-hundred dollars apiece. That's more than the tickets for the prom.
Well, so the after-prom is not like a dance. It's not a continuation of prom. It's a party where you can be like a kid at a carnival. There is, um, last year, we had moon bounces and slides and obstacle courses and inflatable axe throwing and a virtual, virtual roller coaster. Um, it really is to provide a safe environment for those kids who, one, don't wanna go to a party at a hotel or an Airbnb and then also those kids that necessarily wouldn't be allowed to go out after-prom. And we are hoping that this year, um, more students attend. The after-prom coordinator, Ms. Bowman, is actually working on a flyer now that she's hoping can be handed out to every single senior. Um, and, cause to be honest with you, we actually had over seventy permission slips last year. But what happened when we called parents to confirm that all the signatures were real and not forged, a lot of parents thought they were signing a permission slip for the prom because they didn't know what after-prom was and the letter...
See, where I'm going with this is, and I, I understand your passion for children and the love for them, but you're forgetting the seniors and their taxes bill. I mean, to me, you're just overspending there. I mean, you can come up with another plan. I mean, I know some schools, they use, they don't use the overnight sleepover. They use the parking lot at the school the next day for like a barbecue and dance. And it, the cost goes down like a hundred percent, eighty percent. You don't, you don't need seven thousand dollars for thirty-five kids to go to sleep.
So what I was gonna say is, before you enter, before, you know, you speak, Mr. John, I wanna thank you for that point. I'm not in favor of this number five. Um, I did bring it to the board's attention previously when we agreed for, uh, to give all the teachers their twelve steps, some twelve steps, some five steps, some six steps, some three steps, some two steps. I made the board very aware of other things that were coming down the pike and some board members decided that they were okay with still moving forward with this. So I'm gonna tell you right now, I am not comfortable with the five thousand dollars at all, um, for this after-prom. Um, right now, you have about two-thousand-three-hundred dollars. You have three more fundraisers coming. You got a car wash coming. So you'll reach your five thousand dollars, um, before, um, to get to have the five thousand dollars that you're asking the district for right now.
So the, um, just to be clear, the inflatables for the gym are usually between three and four thousand dollars. And the money that, all the food we get is donated. Um, my employer is actually donating the use of their popcorn machine, their cotton candy machine, their hot dog rollers. The food provider for my employer is supplying hot dogs, nachos, rolls, chips, drinks. So the remaining money that we raise is actually spent on items that are given away to the children and we would like to increase the number of raffles that are given away. So last year, we gave away probably about fifteen or sixteen different raffle baskets and we also gave away two smart TVs and two brand-new HP laptops. But we would obviously like to be able to give away more and that's why we continue our fundraising efforts. And if I just have a, if I could ask people who have been on the board longer than me, cause I just learned what the after-prom was last year. So before the pandemic, it's my understanding that you guys had always given five thousand, that the after-prom committee didn't specifically ask for five thousand. That was just the tradition.
That's not true.
Well, I, I'm, okay, I'm just sharing what I was told. Because last year, when the principal submitted the letter, he did not ask for a specific amount and it was shared by the assistant superintendent that traditionally we give five thousand dollars. And to be honest with you, I don't like to be at the high school till three in the morning, but when I found out that after-prom was a three-decade tradition at Academy Park, I felt that it was necessary to bring it back and I thought the school board would continue to support it as they had in the past.
So let's debunk some other things that are not true. Um, not true is not a thirty-year, decade tradition. It's not. Uh, we have some alum in the audience, all my brothers graduated from Academy Park. That is not... It started in ninety-nine, so it wasn't a thirty-year, decade. The problem I have, and I'm gonna make it clear again, I made it aware to every board member, all nine of us, that when you did, when we decided to honor the years of service to teachers, that there will be other events coming down the pike that would need funding before the end of the fiscal year. Some board members said they didn't care. They wanted to make sure that they got their stuff and now we're here asking for five thousand dollars for an after-prom. I'm not comfortable with that at all. And can this come out of this, uh, Academy Park's budget?
Okay, can...
I'm asking one question. Does Academy Park have enough to give out of their school budget five thousand dollars for the senior prom? And would the principal be willing to take it out of his budget?
Well, it would come out of the principal's account. And I believe that it, there's enough money in there that would be left over, but I can't answer that.
Excuse, um, uh, Principal Sharon? Are you willing to give five thousand from your principal budget for the after-prom?
I don't think that's a fair question to ask the administrator on the spot at the public meeting.
He can always say his be for himself. Thank you.
If it's okay with you, I would need to look at my budget and then speak to Dr. Ryan and make sure I speak to Dr. Sanchez as well. Um, but absolutely, I'd be willing to consider it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dr. Sanchez, is there, um, any possibility that you could meet with Dr. Ryan and Dr. Sharon before the next board meeting to see if this can come out of the Academy Park's, um, uh, Academy Park's, uh, principal's budget?
Absolutely. We'll meet as soon as possible, definitely before next week.
Okay, and then we'll have a, um, um, an answer by our next committee, I mean, our next business board meeting.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry.
Um, yes, Ms. McGowan.
When it comes to the after-prom, I think there's a slight misunderstanding of what the intent of the after-prom was. It was never intended to just be a great big party. What it was intended for was to cut down on underage drinking following prom. To stop children from going out and getting hurt and doing things after leaving the prom. When we, and it, it's been a very useful thing. This is not just our district that does this. This is done in several districts around. So for anyone that's thinking this is just a great big old party, it's not. It's done with a purpose. Number two, the other part of it is, it is not just for children who go to the prom. Last year, we invited students... Last year, we invited students who did not attend the prom, but who were still eligible to go to the prom. So you still needed to maintain your eligibility. But this is also an alternative for kids who don't necessarily wanna go to the prom, but still wanna experience the night with their friends. This is an opportunity. And that was also open in other years as well. The reason that I would have been in favor of number five is because when it comes down to spending, when we talk about budgets and things like that, there are many things in our budgets that we need to cut, one hundred percent. I have, once again, and I will stand by, I will give up food before I give up salaries for teachers and things for the children. But this would be a good showing from the board that we're supporting positivity in our district, and we're supporting the students in this endeavor, in keeping them safe as for the original intent of the after-prom. Not at all saying that this has gotta be a grandiose thing. Again, that moon, that simple, a simple moon bounce, three thousand, that takes the big chunk away. Part of this is, because this is still so new to them, we're not able to pull in as many donations as we previously did years before. Pico, I think the first year we did it, Pico donated search, or the spotlights, two spotlights to do a full-on Hollywood-style opening. They, they've, we've had corporate sponsors before, but over the years, that fell off. But we were still able to give quite a party. Part of the gifts that go to the students are things that they're gonna, that are gonna help them coming forward in college. That's why you got the smart TVs to go to the dorm rooms. That's why you got the laptops to help with homework, those kinds of things. So I would want to see us supporting that kind of activity versus not. Because I think that's a positive message to come from the board, that we are in support of those types of activities that are benefiting our kids in the long run. That's all I'm gonna say there.
Mr. Laffery?
When I look at it, you may, mentioned kids that weren't, that didn't go to prom. Okay, but what were they doing from eight o'clock to three o'clock, or eight o'clock to midnight?
Some of them, where they're actually helping set up with their parents.
Okay, but not all of them, probably. See, what I'm looking at, I'm looking at the main line, and trust me, I love the kids, but there's comes a point where you actually have to make a decision. Like I said, I'm willing to table this and come up with an alternative plans. It doesn't have to be open, open all night for an after-prom. It can be two, couple of other different things that would actually cut the cost in half.
Okay, Mr., are you suggesting that we table this, do we have further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a comment on Michelle about the sponsorships and the donations. So prior to two thousand and nineteen, we were able to receive donations and sponsorships. And they, they were tax deductible at the time, or believed they could be tax deductible. And a W-9 was provided by the school district to those businesses. We, the current, the current administration is under the understanding that we cannot do that, we cannot use the school district's W-9. So the Home and School Association is working on establishing their own nonprofit, because they cannot accept tax deductible donations through the school district like after-prom did for twenty-two years.
So why are we not sharing that?
So, wait, I just wanna be clear that I heard this correctly. So so is, is after-prom a sanctioned extracurricular activity within our district?
Home and, it's a subcommittee of home and school, and home and school is an approved parent organization. I was not part of it when they were accepting donations and getting the W-9 from the school district. It was managed by an assistant principal.
So, so it's a home and school association. So do you have your own bank account?
Yes.
And so you're, so then you wouldn't need a W-4 from the district, because you would have your own EIN number as a nonprofit?
Having an EIN does not necessarily mean you are a nonprofit. We have an EIN, well, they have an EIN, but it's gonna be nine hundred dollars for them to establish as a nonprofit. And the committee members have been hounding the PTA since last year to come out, so we can organize as a PTA. The regional director quit. The state director has stopped answering Mrs. Thomas's emails, she's the secretary. So it's been very difficult to organize as a PTA so that the committee could get that nonprofit status. If they're not able to get it through the PTA, they are gonna have to spend nine hundred to a thousand dollars of their funds to establish as a nonprofit. But it was never established before that, because-
Well, you can't say it was never established, because before pandemic, and then in nineteen nineties, there was a PTA, it was established. So you can't say it was never established. So I just wanted to just debunk all of-
So when's the last time Academy Park had a home and school before last year?
I, I went to Halloween, so I wouldn't know.
Because my kid's been in the district since kindergarten for thirteen years, and I never remember Academy Park having a home and school.
So there are several members in the audience, y'all didn't have a home and school?
There was various versions of home and school.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So who ran after-prom?
So after-prom started in ninety-nine, and it was actually the brainchild of my class. We were part of the class ninety-eight, and we were the, uh, student of after-prom driving. And it was back then, after-prom driving was very prevalent. We went to the district, the district, uh, declared, I think, we're getting in line to the rest of the county. Almost every other school in the county and surrounding counties all agreed to have after-prom in some capacity to save for our children. But back then, in ninety-nine, people would go out and drink in hotels and save the firemen. So it's just somebody's question about where were they before the prom? Because a lot of students whose parents would not allow them to the prom-
Thank you.
-to the prom because of religious reasonings. But they were allowed to come out to the school, into the school, to have a safe haven, usually from eleven-thirty till about three or four. So it was never meant to just be, hey, we're gonna be a party. Their main goal was always about safeguarding the children, because children are children. There were a lot of their parents, that's why there's that strict permission slip and checking at the door. Back then, the school board in various fashions have made some type of donations. I don't know the monetary numbers, if it went bigger, smaller. But it was all, usually offset by fundraising. But as everything that we've seen now, prices are going up, so trying to pay for things are going up. And since the pandemic, our, the sponsorships for donations have gone down. So it's one of those nature of the beast kind of a thing.
So, I'm sorry, so question, when did y'all start y'all after-prom? Did you start it like two months before prom? Was it an ongoing thing, like it started in the beginning of the school year, and y'all just fundraised?
So generally speaking, again, ninety-nine was the inaugural year. We started, we started actually in ninety-eight, getting the logistics. We'd never done an after-prom before. But every year since then, it generally revs up usually in January. I mean, yes, we talked, they talked about it all, September, October, November. But usually, it's in January, February starts getting revved up. And, I mean, honestly, yeah, if we can start in September and, and do all the bulk-heavy lifting, that would be, put us in a better position. But realistically, parents, being parents, come January, February, closer we get, then we get that, that sprint home.
Okay, thank you so much.
Also, just to be clear, I, I did look up on the IRS's database, the tax-exempt database, there has never been an Academy Park home and school tax-exempt organization. So we've never had that set.
I'm sorry, yes, Principal Nate?
Uh, in my eleven years at Academy Park High School, it was extremely challenging to get, uh, parents' guardians to participate in the PTO or home school association. Uh, McGowan was in, Ms. Iron, and a few others would be in attendance at the meetings that I would facilitate. And even at Sharon Hill's school, it's still a challenge as well.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perry, did you have anything further for the prom?
No, that was it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Laffery, we will note that, once we get more information, if it's gonna be tabled, we'll just vote on it, either we're gonna table it or not. Is that okay with you? Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry for the long haul. Dr. Sanchez?
We're gonna move on to finance, Mr. Butler? Sure, good evening, everyone. So I will cover the agenda items for next week's legislative meeting. Item one is the Delaware County Community College. These are, this is a traditional resolution where our students attend Delaware County Community College. And part of this obligation is that we pay part of their debt service. So this is our portion of the debt service. This is agreement that had been in place for many, many years. So we have to approve this every year. So our, our contribute, our, our obligation is three hundred sixty-five thousand, four sixty. With skip number two at the moment, number three is Delaware County Intermediate Unit. Again, this is a traditional resolution. And because we are in the county and we're a member of their board, our contribution each year is, and it's been pretty consistent, is twenty-seven thousand, two hundred one dollars, sixteen cents. It has always been in that, around that dollar amount. And number three is, I'm sorry, that's number three. Number four is the Delaware County Technical High School. Again, we have students that attend that facility. And our budget amount for that is eight hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-one. If it is a situation where we have more students that are in attendance or, or less, that number will either go up, or it will go down slightly. And we'll get a refund at the end of the year, or we'll end up paying more. But it, it's pretty consistent at the eight twenty-four. Item five is the special education portion of Delaware County Intermediate Unit. And these are students that are identified in our school district that are rendered services through Delaware County IU. That amount this year is estimated to be one million, nine hundred thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars. Item six, each year, there are district, there are board members from each of the districts that their board membership needs to be approved. If you recall, last year, our district was up for approval. And we did that individually, and we also approved any of the other members that were up to be slotted for the IU board. So item number seven, this is Donovan Group. They, as it's listed here, will provide communication services. Oftentimes during the course of the school year, it's necessary to have an outside organization to craft of communications and to assist us in that manner. And that is what this is going to do for the remainder of the school year. Any questions? Oh, and I still have item number, geez, two, to cover. But any questions on the items that I covered? Yes?
I, and everyone knows I go a little outside the box on almost everything. So I understand what you're doing with these numbers. I'm looking at first at Delaware County Community. I would like to propose for Delaware County Community to come here and let us know what we're, what we're getting for that three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. What I would propose on the back end, and I know it's a little different, but I would like to see a boy and a girl get a scholarship, and a working parent in the district that needs, that wants to further their education to become better at what they're doing, donated by that. The second one would be, what was the second one? The DCIO. I would love to see a DCIU come here, present everything to us that they offer to us, because I don't think our students are being, getting the full use out of DCIO. And I would love for us, and I would love for the administration and for the principals to have a copy, that if a kid has an interest in engineering or something like that, that they could actually sit down in their school and see it. And yes or no, I want them to do it, and then we switch it along. I want them to work for their money, is what I'm basically saying.
So I can, I can, I'm sorry, I can speak for DCIU.
Okay.
So DCIU provides a catalog to Academy Park employees who deals with the technical school part of it. They can choose which program they want to do. They have three options to choose from, one, two, or three. Like, say I wanted to be in cosmetology, I picked cosmetology. And I was like, oh, I wanna be culinary, I picked culinary for second. And then I might pick engineering for third. So depending on when the applications come in, you might get one of the, one of them. Some programs are four years, some of them are two years, some of them are three years. So it starts in tenth grade, I believe, so from tenth to twelfth. So for example, there are students that have classes in the morning at Academy Park, and then they go to DCIU Technical School in the afternoon. There are some students that have DCIU Technical School in the morning, so they don't, they report to Academy Park, but the bus picks them up, takes them out to Aston, Fallcroft, Marple, they have nursing program, they have a vast amount of programs. I think I have one of the catalogs in my trunk, I can give it to you. So if you go to the technical school, either it's Marple, Aston, Fallcroft, or is one more missing? Is one more, I can't think of it.
Marple.
Marple, Marple, Fallcroft, Aston. It's just three, okay, three. And then if I have technical school in the morning, so I go at Academy Park, the bus picks me up at like six fifteen in the morning, takes me to whatever campus I'm going to, then the bus brings them back, and then they take the other courses, their other remaining courses in the afternoon at Academy Park.
See, what I'm, what I'm saying is, like, I understand the high school part. I'm looking at a kid that is in seventh grade, and I see his sketches.
Oh, that's what you, okay.
I see his sketches, he's drawing something, he may have a knack for engineering, and I want you to develop in the seventh grade, and let him be aware of these things that he can actually grow into it.
So I will, I will bring that suggestion to the board, to the DCIU board. And then I will also make sure that they have a summer program as well, that anybody in the district, out of the fifteen school districts, any student could go in the summertime. They have the things that you're talking about, all those in the summertime as well. So this, the money that we pay, which we've been paying for over twenty years, the same amount, because I asked as a board member, why we haven't raised the money? In twenty years, why are we still charging districts the same amount for twenty years? Because we can't levy, they can't levy taxes as a IU organization. So their money either comes from the districts
Excuse me.
or the state, and then grants that they write. So I will make sure at our next meeting that I bring this to their attention. And maybe we can start looking in the, in the middle school, preferably. And then I'll make sure that Dr. Sanchez gets the summer programs, things as well, and the catalogs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, Mr. Butler, for you. For number four, you said that budget for the technical school goes up and down based on enrollment. What about number one? Does that number go up and down based on our enrollment for the community college?
So number one is, is associated with debt service, the buildings. And there, I want to say that all fifteen school districts participate. I could be, there could be one that does not, participates in the debt service of the new buildings and maintaining. And then the, the result of that is, is that there are reduced tuition fees for students and parents in, in Southeast Alcoa or any of the participating school districts. So that's the benefit of participating in this, that the tuition costs are much lower for participating districts.
Yeah, no, I, I under, I'm sorry.
I, I guess my question is, is our participation and our enrollment enough to warrant three hundred and sixty-five- hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars? Does that make sense? Do we have an, I would like to know our enrollment, if you have numbers for our dual enrollment children.
Well, Mr. Rafferty asked if they could come, yeah, we, we can do that, but this is not, this amount is not for, for dual enrollment or, or students or adults in the district that participate. This is just our portion of an obligation that we would participate in them enhancing their cap, their campus for future reduce rates.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I will move on to the budget presentation. As I had said at the last meeting, we have at the legislative meeting on next week, that will be held next week, we have to approve a preliminary proposed budget and that's just by a requirement of the Department of Ed. So I will say in advance that this is, as I said before, it's prelimin, prelimi, prelim, Jesus, preliminary. And so we still have work to do. There will be further discussions and I will expect to get questions that I can answer to further clarify where we're at with this budget and why it is what it is. So what we will cover are budget expended, expense challenges, what we know, there's the Act One Index, real estate increase impact, general fund budget summary, budget expenditures by object code, budget expenditures by function, general fund budget timeline, and then the next report. So here are, and I, I will cover this every, and remind folks every, every meeting where we're discussing the budget, that these are our challenges, charter school, tuition, special education, retirement costs, transportation, and of course contractual obligations that deal with salaries and benefits. And this happens, this is something that occurs every single year. So here's what we know. First section is the student enrollment. I'm estimating that for twenty-four, twenty-five, we will have in district four thousand sixty kids, sixty-seven kids and approximately, this number may change, six hundred eighteen students that attend charter schools. The next item is charter school budget. I will tell you that this year, I mentioned it last month, that this dollar amount, budget amount was twelve million, five hundred thousand. I increased it by four million dollars because we have a charter school that has been approved and has a location on Sharon Avenue and I, the four million dollars could be high or it could be low. I increased it four million dollars. I'm hopeful that that is over what is required, but that's where I have it at this time. Next, we have in excess of six hundred and ten employees in the district. The next category are, are the retirement rates for P.E.S.R.'s, Public School Employee Retirement System. This year, we're budgeting at thirty-three point nine percent. Here are some other items that we know. What I have in the budget is for school climate support. I have one million dollars in the budget this year. As I mentioned before, charter school tuition, I increased four million dollars. The next item has to do, the next three items, bullets, have to do with the memorandum of understanding that the board voted on a couple of months ago. This is pertaining to the teacher's contract and these, these are the anticipated cost for what was approved. That, in short, that contract or that MOU is in reference to step movement, step, step adjustments that cover the, the years of twenty-twelve through twenty-twenty-two. The estimated amount or the calculated amount for that is one million, three hundred seven thousand, three hundred and eighty. This amount, so I have two other line items here. One is the prorated full package. Full package means that it's the gross salary, it's the social security payments, Medicare payments, any payroll costs associated with this expenditure would be in the, in the full, the full package dollar amount of one point three million dollars and that would be for the entire year. What has been agreed to, excuse me, what has been agreed to is that that amount would be prorated for the period of March first, twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-four, which is sixty-nine days. In the, as far as the total package amount, it's four mil, four hundred seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and five. The last line item here is what is the prorated amount for just salaries? The prorated amount for that, for just salaries is three hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred seventeen. And that amount will be paid very shortly based on the contents of the MOU. Any question, Ms. Monroe, what's that?
This is just for the sixty-nine days, but this budget is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. What does that cost?
The, I, I do have that number and I'll have to report that out. So I have the original amount, the increase, if my memory serves me, was one million, ninety-eight thousand as a total package, I believe. That was in the original package when it was negotiated. I will tell you that as we go through this document, at that time, the package, the contract was based on three hundred and two teachers. We currently are paying three hundred and forty teachers. So as you see some of my numbers moving forward, it's not necessarily apples to apples. I am working on another analysis to better refine the actual impact. Again, what happens is that folks are moving in the step schedule, if that, which, degree level and step, years of service, your degree level and your years of service, the step. So if you were on step four and based on the adjustment, you could have moved either three or four steps in the salary schedule. So that moves, you have to calculate what the, what the financial impact is on that as well, but I will provide a, a comparative, a comparative analysis for that. But the initial contract amount was around one point one million dollars as a total package at that time. Again, as we go through this document, there is this step adjustment that will, as I said, cover twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-two and then going into the twenty-four, twenty-five year, there is one other step that has to be added on to these numbers. This is a historical view of the index, the Act One Index and this Act One Index is a mechanism that will dictate to school districts as to what and how they increase taxes in, within their school district. So there is a statewide base for, for lack of a better term, more affluent school districts that have a commercial base that will support the district and reduce, and not have an adverse effect on residential taxes. For Southeast Delco, there and other school districts similar to us, there is also an adjustment that is made for Southeast Delco, which says that, basically says that although the base may be in years past, one point seven, Southeast Delco can increase their tax base, their tax mileage by two point five percent. And that started back in twenty, why, my analysis is twelve thirteen, fiscal year twelve thirteen. So moving up to, we'll go to fiscal year nineteen twenty. The base was two point three and let me just get help here, so we're right here. Two point three, we were allowed to increase taxes three point four, the district made a decision to go three percent. In twenty twenty-one, two point six, three point nine, we did three point nine. Twenty-one, twenty-two, three point percent, I'm sorry, three percent, we were able to do four point six, we did three point nine. And twenty twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, again, five point one, we did three point nine. Twenty-three, twenty-four, four point one, six point two, we did a zero percent tax increase. Twenty-four, twenty-five, five point three base, we're allowed to increase taxes eight point one percent. In this document that you will see, I have a six percent tax increase in this document. And again, I will qualify my statement, we are early in the process and we have to have serious conversation about how and what we need to do to reduce that tax increase. Again, last year, there was a zero percent tax increase. When we go back to eighteen, nineteen, I will remind everyone, and that's when I started my stay at Southeast Delco, we were one point two million dollars in the red. And this effort of these three, the three point nine and doing the maximum was for me to gently increase, one, to get us out of fund balance. So again, we were one point two when I got here, the year after that, we were five hundred thousand dollars in the black. In twenty-one, twenty-two, we were at four point nine million dollars in the black. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we were five point three million dollars in the black. Twenty-three, twenty-four, we, I'm sorry, twenty-two, twenty-three, we should be around, well, it's around five point six in the black. Twenty-three, twenty-four, I'm uncertain at this point because again, we had a zero percent tax increase, so that difference you'll see in my report will, I recommended a two point five percent, which would have generated one point one million dollars of tax revenue. So that one point one, if things go according to budget, then will be a shortfall of one point one and that will have to come out of fund balance. So my goal this year was to do the best that we could as a district to not have that occur. Again, this current year, this current document that you're going to see has a six percent tax increase in it and I'll move on to the next slide. So this is just the calculation of how I calculate taxes and things of that nature and it's all based on assessed value. So twenty-three, twenty-four, the assessed value was one billion, five hundred forty-five million, eight hundred seventy-one thousand, three seventy-six. At the end of that year, there were still reassessments occurring and you can see that the assessed value went up almost ten million, ten million dollars. So that's what I start out with. So that ten million dollars, based on all the previous calculations, afforded the district another, I think it was like two hundred seventy-one thousand dollars in tax revenue, just based on the assessment itself. So here we go. So these are just the summary numbers, we'll go over those very quickly. We have local revenues of fifty-two million, one sixty-four, three hundred fifty-six. You can see that based on the six percent plus or minus some of the increases in other revenue items, it's three million, one hundred fifty-seven thousand that were increasing revenue, state revenue. I will tell you that this number may have some flexibility with it. I took the amount that we're receiving for the current fiscal year and I only increased it four percent. What is in the state proposal is in excess of four percent, but I did not build that in because it has not been voted on. So right now I have state revenue going up six point seven percent and that's for a variety of reasons, social security revenue, their state share of that, so forth and so on. Revenue for federal is going down four to, by four point eight. This has to do with federal funding for ESRS that we're no longer going to receive. Instructional, now going to expenditures, instructional expenditures are up five point four, support services decreased three, three hundred sixteen thousand in total and non-instructional is increasing one thousand, two forty-seven. Looking at this preliminary proposed column, you will see, as I mentioned before, there is a shortfall of one million, two hundred ten thousand, eight sixty-three and that is with a six percent tax increase. And this is just a pie chart of what the revenue looks like from a visual point of view. This is by object code. Object code is specific to salary benefits. It's, there's the function code, which talks about instruction as a total, non-instruction facilities in total. This drills down to salary benefits, professional technical services, property services, other purchase services, supplies, property and other objects and other uses of funds. And the, starting with supplies, you can see that my goal is always to keep it flat and we can work with what we have. And we try to drill this number, stay at that number or below that number. Same thing with property, other objects and this use of funds here, the other objects and the use of funds is all relative to debt service and there are debt service, our loans that we have taken to enhance our buildings over the years. And this is the payback amount on an annual basis. And this is just a pie chart of what this looks like. I will tell you that this will also be on the website, so you will be able to see it from the website as well. And this is, as I mentioned before, function code and this is covering it from a different point of view for regular instruction. You can see forty-six million, four fifty, special education, twenty-three million, three twenty-one, vocational, nine eighty-six, with other instructional programs, two point four, higher education, three, three hundred forty-nine. So then we go into a pupil personnel and you can see the numbers as they're listed. We have student activities and community service and as I said, debt service, those other two line items under object codes is the six point four for debt service. And this is just a pie chart of what that looks like and what portion is what. So you can see that the majority of the money goes towards instruction, which is, which is always the goal. And these are the, the dates. We have covered the fifteenth, the fourteenth, and now we're up to the eighteenth. Next week, as I mentioned before, there will be an adoption of the preliminary proposed final budget. This is state terminology, but this is not, this is not the final budget. The final budget adoption will take place on June twenty-seventh. So between now and June twenty-seventh, the board and the administration will work closely together to refine this document. to refine this document and talk about what new initiatives may be in the budget, or what is in the budget that can come out or be modified to, as I said before, to reduce that tax increase. I will mention that for the district, it's important that we have a savings account, which is the fund balance. That will help us do better when we're looking to enhance facilities, borrow money. To do that without a committed fund balance, without a sustainable financial plan, we will not be able to move forward in doing any types of enhancements for the students and the community. Any questions? Seeing that there are none. I think.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
And again, this document will be on the district website. And again, I'm always open and looking forward to questions because the better that we all understand this process and understand what is required in a school district budget, the better it will be for us to move forward and move the organization forward for the benefit of having a incredible, incredible facilities and incredible instructional program for, for students. And that's always the goal. And the next is human resources?
Good evening, board, and good evening, audience. So I'm here to talk about the items for human resources. If you note on page three is where we're going to begin, you see one termination there. That is an official termination. The person decided to go outside of the district and no longer will be in the school security as a career. The next number two, we're ratifying resignations for three individuals there. One was a termination that turned into a resignation. The second one was never showed up for first day. She decided not to come to the district. So we approved her last month. So we have to now approve her resignation of not showing up here. The third was semi-retire slash resignation. Number three, we hired a autistic support special ed teacher at Delcroft. Number four, we hired a health and physical education teacher for Delcroft, who worked her time between Delcroft and Sharon Hill. Page four, yay, Academy Park, you hired your algebra teacher. But there is a correction to the salary on there that will be bolded for next month. It should be master's thirty at a different step. So that salary is incorrect there. And we also hired a special education case manager. Number five, we hired a, another school security officer to replace the number one resignation that you see. And number six, we hired seven classified hires. So we had a total of technically one termination, which was a school security officer. But we gained twelve new hires. And out of the twelve, we had three teachers, professional staff that we hired. So we're doing pretty good for the hiring for April twenty twenty-four. Numbers eight and nine, we have a total of seven leave of absences there, listed there. And number fourteen, we want to ratify the supplemental contracts there. We have two individuals there as well.
I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank you for all of, that you're doing for the hiring. We've noticed that the amount of listings is slowly, is decreasing. It used to be super long. That is, we are filling those positions. You were doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Mrs. McGowan, I want to thank you for the comment. But she's not done yet. She's got some really great news in, in a summary fashion that will help put an exclamation point for your appreciation. So she's gonna, I'm gonna help her pass that out.
So I'm going to kind of backtrack because I like to always do my cheerleader rah rah for the district. We had two job fairs in March and April. I want to thank Dr. Gibbs Tapper and Leanne Hudson for attending our job fair from D V C E E. And out of that, we got three hires. And then we just went to University of Delaware, and we met all the students who are graduating in special education and education. And we went to the job fair. We met so many students at the University of Delaware. And out of that, we literally got ten teacher resumes. And all of them are graduating in May. Most of them have done their student teaching already and have some type of experience. And I said, hey, listen, you want to come to the district. Because if you look over there against the wall, that is just a little semi what our tables look like when we go to job fairs. But we have a lot more little goodies and paraphernalia when we go. But that's just a sample. And this time, I took with us a mini brochure because I wanted our competitors to really realize what we can offer. So I created this pamphlet with the QR codes. And in it, you have our competitive benefit package. A lot of people don't know that the Southeast Delco School District, we pay for teachers to get their certifications by tuition paid. So we're ensuring that the new teachers, and when we go out, our marketing status is to say, hey, listen, we're going to pay for your tuition. And maybe, you know, you can get certified and, and stay with the district. I want to point out to them that we do have pension as part of our benefits. We have a great medical benefit package. Being that I was in a private industry prior to coming to here in education, I have to say, teachers, educators, you have the best medical benefits out there. So that's really a plus for coming to a school district. Along with the flexible spending accounts, the health savings accounts, the salary increases on their steps every year, family illness days, personal days that you receive in holiday pay, and your summers off. So those are the kind of marketing things I was saying, to come over to our table. You really want to work for us. Okay? So that was our brochure. So I want to draw your attention to the next thing, which is board members, I passed out something called the school vacancy report teachers. So when I got here, November twenty-seventh, I kept hearing a lot, teachers are leaving, teachers aren't coming here, nobody wants to work here. There's a lot of vacancies. Yes, truly, there were a lot of vacancies. But narrowing down the process, marketing, and my yard signs. I feel my yard signs work, our job fairs that we're going to, really looking at the job postings and being very clear and specific on our sites. We're on different job board sites now. You can see a vacancy report here. And if you see, it's an infographic broken down by schools. And it shows you the total number of vacancies at each school. And then the bold number underneath is all your teachers that are in positions there. So if you look at Darby Township, they have one vacancy, which is special education. Delcroft, vacancies are in special education. Harris, the health and P E teacher, we're interviewing like three, three people. Yep, so we'll be on our way hiring there too. But I just want to say, look at the last one for Academy Park. There's eight vacancies, but the vacancies are special education teachers. And I have to say, when I go to job fairs and talk to other human resources departments from other districts, everybody in the state of Pennsylvania is having the same problem, special education teachers. So one thing I want to express to the teachers, when we roll out what the process is of using the professional development tuition reimbursement next year, is to say, hey, listen, if you are going for additional education and using that, those dollars that the district provide, think about maybe getting certified in special education because that is our need. So out of the total teachers, we have about three hundred and thirty-four teachers, but look at the vacancy numbers. There are only eleven. Why'd you say twelve? Oh, twelve. Okay. There's twelve. So out of the twelve, those are special education teaching jobs. Again, that's a problem all other districts are having. But we have the longevity of teachers here. They stay. They're not leaving. They want to come here. They see the yard signs. They see the brochures. They're paying attention. So our model isn't human resources, come work for us. Come work for us. We're the better district. All right? Any questions?
Okay, I'm just going to amend my first comment and go, oh, my God. We've been waiting for this report of how many vacancies there were open. And this lets me know kids are not in class coloring in their senior year. This gives me hope based off of where we were just this time last year. So thank you to you, to the building principals, to everybody for all you've done to get this in here. And kudos to you. I'm sure they love seeing you come in. Thank you.
Thank you. We still have more to do, more to do.
I have a quick question. Would you be able to supply the board with any data you've collected since you've started from exit interviews?
Yes, I definitely can. I definitely can. A lot of the ones that have left since I've been here, I can definitely get that information for you.
Well, I want to say thank you, but I do have one concern. Do you plan on hiring someone to help you?
What did you say?
Do you plan on hiring someone to help you so you don't burn out?
Yeah, so we added a member to the staff HR specialist position that the board graciously approved for us. So for years, it was just three people. So there is another person in there that is assisting Mrs. Woolley greatly and has balanced out that apart, that department with interviews and structuring interviews, questions, and those kinds of things. So, yeah, it has worked out.
Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woolley. I really appreciate all of you've done thus far in the district. I know it was not easy, but we thank you for your time and your effort. We appreciate it.
The next item, sorry, geez. Is going to be policy. And I did not bring the policies in with me. I have policies in my office that I have to distribute. So let's move to the next one. I'll grab those policies. And they're pretty straightforward. Property, Mr. Curry?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight I have a few items, one voting and two non-voting. We'll start with the voting. I'm recommending to approve the authorization to renew the engagement with ServiceMaster. They provide after-school and summer cleaning services effective this July and extending out to June thirtieth. Since I've been here, cleaning and the conditions of our buildings have been, you know, a very important thing to me. And I've done the work to make sure that we're getting the most out of this company. We've made some changes to the buildings where issues have arisen, and this company has worked with us, you know, hand in hand. We're always looking to improve, you know, our services, not only for the cleaning, but our custodial services, maintenance services, so anywhere we can improve. But like I said, looking to get that voted on.
Before you move forward, there have been multiple complaints about the cleanliness of schools. And so you're still recommending ServiceMaster to be our cleaning provider?
Yes. Well, according to the contract, any complaints go into the service book. That gives them the opportunity to correct their measures. That's something that I review regularly. Our custodians are doing checks per day. When things come up that are brought to me, like I said, I'll contact the manager. We'll go take a look to make sure that maybe those items are ServiceMaster problem or scheduling, and we'll make, you know, corrections from there. Twice a year, I do review all the logbooks that are located in the schools to make sure that things that I hear in a district are accurate. And like I said, since, since I got here, those complaints have decreased almost every year.
So I'm going to tell you right now, because I'm always upfront with people, I'm not going to support ServiceMaster renewing their contract with us. The places I've seen have just not been acceptable for children and/or adults. So I'm just telling you upfront, I'm not supportive of ServiceMaster at this point. Their contract ends on, their contract is a renewable contract, right?
Yes, I think we have.
And when is it? It ends on the twenty, twenty-seven?
Well, that's, that's what we recommend.
So when is their con, their contract ends this?
June.
June. Okay. So I will be more comfortable with putting out a bid.
Can I add to that, Madam President?
Yes, you may. Please, President Perry.
So ServiceMaster also cleaned the alternative building we rent from Collingdale?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not sure if they've made you aware, if the borough has reached out to administration. It's come up in several public council meetings in Collingdale about the cleanliness of the bathrooms in the parts of the building that we rent. And most recently on Tuesday, they actually voted to change the locks and keep the Borough Hall bathrooms locked because they feel the teachers are leaving the school part of the building to come to the Borough Hall to use the bathroom because the bathrooms that they have access to are not clean. So I just want to make you aware of that because it's coming up in public meetings over and over again. And if it's ServiceMaster, that, that's definitely a concern.
This is the first I'm hearing about that, but I'll take a look into, in that matter. And like I said, I'll continue to review our custodians' checks, like I said, as I take visits to the schools on my inspections and, and the service logs that are there. They're there at all the schools. And I've met with the principals to discuss the process, how we go about that. I'll continue to do so. And if anything, like I said, that would come up that I would need to present to the board, I would do that.
So question, so no principal has complained about the cleanliness of their building?
Some items from time to time have come up, but not to the level that it's, things aren't getting addressed or that conditions like, you know, don't hit the mark of being cleaned. So if something was overlooked and it was addressed, it's not like, you know, I would get repeat calls saying this is continually not being addressed.
So some things have been there for months. So what I'm saying is, I don't know if like, for, as me as a teacher, if I keep logging and the stuff's not being corrected, I'm not logging anymore because I'm not gonna, I'm gonna feel like I'm wasting my time. So I'm gonna do what I need to do. So I'm gonna clean my own room, or I'm gonna take out my own trash, or I'm gonna clean the bathroom before I go in it. So what I'm saying is, I know you may have a log, but are the employees just fed up and filling out the log? And that's why they're not being?
On, on some of my travels, I review the book even if I had time as I'm popping in there on a, you know, some other type of inspection. I've gone to rooms and talked to teachers just to see if things are getting addressed, if they've made multiple requests or things like that. So I've done that at multiple schools and had discussions with teachers. And like I said, I review all the logs just to verify who's entering complaints, what can be done to correct those measures. And I do that yearly like I've been doing over the last several years. several years.
And if I could just add something to, uh, to this conversation, uh, there, keeping buildings clean is also, it's a, it's a, it's a team effort for that, uh, for that to occur, and also depends on when folks are going through and viewing the buildings. I mean, that if you're going through during the daytime, and it happened to be raining the day before, and the kids are out in the field, and they're tracking dirt or mud or whatever on their feats, on their feet into the building, it depends on, if you're there during the daytime, it may not have gotten cleaned up by that point in time, or you may have heard something about that. And then the other thing is, is that, uh, it, sometimes it takes, part of the team effort is, is that all of us as adults have to make sure that we're holding students accountable to make sure that they're keeping their environment nice and neat as well, and sometimes that doesn't occur. And again, if you go through the building, uh, during that time, I know there are situations where there are pencil shavings or just crumbled up paper on classroom floors, and it seems like folks just walk by it, or students aren't made to take it over to the trash can, and then the classroom appears to be untouched and, uh, not clean. Uh, and same thing with the bathrooms, some of the bathrooms, I will tell you, get, get very much abused, uh, by students, and they are dismant, I mean, some of the bathrooms are dismantled, and when you, you go into these bathrooms, you're thinking, okay, that, that's a little bit above board as far as where you're, what, um, where you're supposed to go to the bathroom, uh, where you're supposed to put your paper towel after you dry your hands off, or the toilet paper, those kinds of things, and they're just some of the realities that when you go into some, I've gone in some of the bathrooms, and it, it has been completely unacceptable, but if a, if a teacher or a building administrator has not gone into that bathroom, and I went in first, then I'm gonna see something that maybe they haven't seen yet. So, it's a combination, I, I get your, I understand your point, but it is, keeping buildings clean is, is a team effort, uh, with that.
I, I wanted to weigh in on that. So, part of the musical, I get to go in and help do the makeup, and we use an art room for the, it's actually the pottery room where it has the kiln and all that. I clean that room. Uh, when I get in there, there's no one in it, it should already have been cleaned because I'm coming in at like six, five, six o'clock, whatever. I have, on my own, gone through and swept and gotten everything up because I believe if we're using it, we should, we should leave it cleaner than when we found it. But when I went through and cleaned that room, I was pulling in all kinds of trash that had been there for months. There was no way this was like a day's worth of trash. I was pulling in so much dirt and, and bottles and pencils and things that were in areas. How often are the classrooms deep cleaned? There, there's a difference between, I look, there's nothing on the floor, uh, yeah, the trash is done, but how often do they move everything out, sweep everything out, mop?
We have, we have a frequency checklist where they go in, and if they're using a dust mop, that should be daily. Um, I think it's once or twice a week where a spot, a wet mop would occur, daily spot mopping would occur, so that's the standard cleaning throughout the district. Um, like I said, there has been incidences where there's been gyms that are, floors are slippery, and we've had to increase how often those, uh, spaces have gotten cleaned because something that is not adding up, and, you know, that particular gym is close to the field that tracks in more dirt than maybe another school. So, um, again, our custodian had to jump in because in the contract, it might not be stated that, that floor gets fully mopped every night because we don't pay for those services because it would be astronomical for a cleaning company to fully mop every classroom, deep cleaned every night. So, the frequencies, frequencies that we have, um, you know, like I said, uh, from what I've been reviewing, um, you know, um, I, I'm not seeing the amount of complaints in my walkthroughs and talking with staffs. Do things come up from time to time? Absolutely. Are they notified or addressed, and that I follow up with the ServiceMaster supervisor to make sure these things are getting taken care of? You know, we're, we're in talks weekly, um, to make sure like things are getting taken care of throughout the building. And if anything comes my way, I'm out to the buildings that next day, looking at staffs, looking at other buildings, like you said, I let the principals know, and they're looking at their concerns if, if it comes up, um, and it's, I, I believe, I would hope that people see that I'm out there looking into this stuff because I take it seriously, and I want to hold them accountable, and there's been times where I brought stuff that, to their attention that, you know, needed to get done correctly, and I wasn't happy with it, but it, it got addressed, or vice versa, that, you know, particular building a couple of years ago, they had to re-scrub ten rooms because kids got ahold of some pencil sharpeners and dug the lead all into the newly waxed floors. We didn't get charged an extra fee, and, you know, they're very accommodating to work with us when things come up that our students are doing last year. The climate at the high school was a challenge, and we were able to get them in and, um, you know, help out with bathroom conditions and checks because we didn't have the full custodian staff to do so, and again, that was done at a very low additional cost. So, with those things and being able to work with them, and work with the building principals and teachers, I've given, um, you know, dustpanning rooms out to, to rooms that didn't have it because they should have it. We went out, because some buildings struggled with dirt, we went out and bought a mat service so that, you know, regularly those mats are getting changed out by service. So, the way I look at it is, it's all, um, you know, we're all in it together, it's not just a ServiceMaster thing, but I'm gonna continue to make sure they're holding their end up to the bargain, that our custodians are, you know, chipping in and that we're presenting the best buildings we, we can.
So, your recommendation would be to move forward with ServiceMaster based off of your experiences with them?
Yes, and in my talks with other districts that have challenges as well, um, you know, they have challenges, so we bring someone new in, some of the issues that we have, we're still gonna have probably with another district, and it's, it's the same stuff at some buildings and some problems, not saying everything.
Okay, I just heard you say something, a proper protocol to get to you would be, because I have parents come to me and say that their kids are slipping in the bathrooms. What do I do about it? Well, do they call the principal?
So, yes, so their first, first of all, if a child falls in the bathroom, they should be notifying their teacher, and their teacher notifying the nurse, and that protocol, and then someone calls the parent, this and the third. If a parent is coming to you, then you need to direct them to the building administrator, the principal, so that they can voice their concerns to them, and then the principal will move up the?
Principal will get a, get ahold of him.
Correct.
That's, see, I'm, I'm playing into that theory of proper protocol.
Yes, that is the proper protocol.
So, when somebody, and there are other issues about cleanliness and that, but gotta remember, I have the Moms of Poplar Street.
So, direct them to the principal.
No problem.
And then the principal will take care of it from there.
And the timeframe is what I'm looking at, because I've, I've known that they have called the school.
So, then that would be a Dr. Sanchez, because I don't know how the new, I mean, Dr. Sanchez is new, I don't know if they're gonna revise protocol or throwing cabinet, or so that would be between these two gentlemen.
So, for next, next school year, that could change, but for now, it's the chain of command. So, if it's, if, if the requests are going to principals and principals aren't getting back, the next level up would be to contact someone in central admin. For facilities, that would be Mr. Butler. But if you need to, then you can also contact one of the assistant superintendent, Dr. Ryan, or Mr., or Dr. Lowry, any of us will make sure that there's a response to a parent's request.
Thank you.
When it gets to this building, it is, we are very proactive and very responsive in that regard. Uh, again, I'll go back to the, and this is a larger conversation, I think, that we all need to have, um, as far as staffing, uh, district staffing, monitoring bathrooms for a student to go into a bathroom or adult to go into a bathroom and slip on the bathroom floor, there's, there's a bigger picture, there, there's something else that's odd about us going into a bathroom and slipping. Uh, and again, if, if I'm there and I'm monitoring, I, and I'm monitoring three hall, I mean, three ba, or three corridors, I have to get to that spot. So, again, it's, it's about the timing. If I walk in and see it, then yeah, I'll address it, but if I, if I haven't gotten there yet, then it could potentially, uh, you know, end up being a different conversation. So, um, what will, what will end up happening if, if the board is not, uh, whatever is decided, and we do, uh, Mr. Curry goes through the bidding process, it's, at this point, I don't believe, it's not possible for us to do a bid and to do the selection and get everybody geared up by July one. So, whether it's, there's gonna be an opportunity where we can, um, uh, extend it a year to give us time to go through a process, but to go through a process now and award it and get started up for September is gonna be more than challenging.
So, I would be more comfortable with just extending the contract one year so that we can start the bidding process.
Okay.
That's just my suggestion, it's only, it's nine of us.
I understand what you're saying, but you're.
Ten plus, I don't.
Can I make a comment about communication and also student accountability? Um, one, so I've been hearing about the instant, the situations in Collingdale since the election day in November, so it is very concerning to me that no one from that building has reached out to facilities to express their concerns to you. Um, second, student accountability and also communications. I would agree with Mr. Curry that ServiceMaster has been accommodating for some difficult situations. Last year, there were concerns in the gym, the bleachers were filthy, there was trash underneath of the bleachers, I'd made a suggestion in the meeting that we should have the athletes clean it up, and the former athletic director actually had a whole event, well, ServiceMaster came in, our girls and boys basketball teams came in, and they scrubbed those bleachers clean, they pulled them out, they swept the trash and the dust from underneath, I mean, I don't know if there was an additional charge for those hours, but the, the gym was spotless after that, and I'm pretty sure that was before we redid the floor, maybe? Um, but either way, like, I feel like maybe we just need to really build up that communication and hold both students and ServiceMaster accountable, because the basketball team actually had a really good time cleaning the gym. So, we need to get, um, and the reason I had brought it up were my experiences at the musical and the Collingdale Athletic Club. So, at the musical, those kids don't leave till that auditorium's clean, they're not allowed. Collingdale Sports, those kids and those parents don't leave that gym till the gym is clean. So, I would agree that with Mr. Butler, that it needs to be a team effort to keep the buildings clean, and we need to have a lot of communication.
And just to, uh, you know, piggyback on that, um, like I said, when I see things arise, I communicate with the principals or vice versa, we'll come over, we'll take a look right away, um, if I need to get ServiceMaster there in the morning or at night or whatever the case may be, um, that's what I've done in the past and I'll continue to do with that up.
Can I just, can I just answer your question? I know the answer, but I'm just asking the question. Um, with the ServiceMaster, they are aware that all of the restrooms in all of the buildings are supposed to be cleaned on a daily basis?
Yes.
And some of them even have to be cleaned more than that, if there's an occurrence or somebody reports a problem?
Uh, if they're in, usually they start later. Uh, I don't think we have as many ServiceMaster employees starting earlier because last year we were covering for some of the climate stuff, let's say at Academy Park, or maybe there was another issue at a school, maybe where we brought some people in, I, at Darby Township, at one point in time, we actually brought in a ServiceMaster employee to assist at cleaning the bathrooms during the day because they were being vandalized, or water was on the floor and things like that. So, I don't even think we were like upcharged on that either.
Yeah, so, so, Mr. Curry, just remind everyone that the contract is for after-school. So, when I said there's a larger conversation about staffing, so our staff is going through the buildings, and correct me if I'm wrong, to just double-check some of the bathrooms, I know that there are, uh, some of the, um, monitors, uh, non-instructional monitors that are, uh, assigned to do bathroom watch, so there are a set of eyes that could make us aware of certain things, uh, but that's the larger picture I'm talking about as far, and that's why people talk, that's why I keep stating, when you go through, if I'm a monitor and I don't go through before someone else, and someone else sees it, it could be another conversation.
Yeah, and this is stuff that maybe occurred prior to, say, corridors being on board, which has been helpful at the high school, or before Darby Township was able to have someone monitor a hallway or, uh, an area that was more of a high-traffic vandalized area.
So, Mr. Curry, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what I'm hearing is maybe you might want to suggest there'd be more, um, custodial staff or, um, the morning, during school hours, to make sure that these facilities are properly clean, um, because like my school, they clean it every hour, because students like to throw water and throw toilet paper and clog urinals, so is that what you're suggesting?
No, but what I'm saying is, uh, in years past, before schools?
No, no, I'm talking about what do we need now, right, to help support your recommendation for ServiceMaster, that's what I'm asking. So, if you're telling me ServiceMaster only comes in during the evening, what is happening to these bathrooms from eight to three?
Once school starts, those items get reported to the main office typically and will get reported to the custodian. Our custodians currently are in the lunchroom a good bit of time. Um, it, it's possible that we may need to add like a roving custodian to help out buildings.
So, that's what I'm asking.
So, that, that is a possibility, but, um, in our experience from last year to this year, and like, you know, conditions in certain buildings have changed, um, but sure, if we added another custodian, we did add a lead custodian that is going to assist in, you know, some of the deficiencies on our walkthrough, so now we have an extra body to support the custodians. So, yeah, we can look into adding another roving custodian to help those buildings, maybe a bigger building like Darby Township, that's bigger square footage, more kids, um, you know, as we see or, you know, move them around. So, that is a, you know, that is something that we could definitely look into.
Okay, because I don't, Mr.
I'm sorry, real quick, you, you guys did this already with us a little bit, like, you have the one woman, she comes in, she, she comes in about twelve-thirty, one o'clock, I don't know if it's on her time because this is, she's one of the ServiceMasters, but she's awesome and she's, she's helped in two of our areas, she goes in twice a day, um, during the day, and cleans, and cleans the bathrooms, and I do have somebody monitoring in both areas, but it has really made a difference, I think, um, and I do appreciate it because like it, it takes a lot of that burden off, and, you know, kids do do stuff, there's nothing, you know, no matter what I have out there, it's gonna happen, so.
Correct, so that's why I was making the suggestion, Mr. Curry, so I'm, I, I have a key to my floor, so I lock the bathrooms at a certain time. I give everybody a certain time they can use the bathroom, because what I'm not gonna keep dealing with is throwing toilet paper up on the ceiling, throwing paper towels down the urinals or the stalls, flooding the bathrooms, and now we're having the ice skating rink. I, I just can't have that kind of safety, and I have, and there's a monitor out there, so I lock the bathroom, so they actually have to come find me to get a key. And I did that for about a month, and then by that time, they've realized, um, you better keep it clean. Um, also, we had to start taking paper, towel, and toilet paper out of the bathroom because it was, it was coming too much, and it interrupts instruction, um, it causes, you know, physical altercations where they're playing around in there, first they're playing, now they're fighting. So, my suggestion would, if that's what you need and if that's working in another building, then maybe that might be a suggestion, maybe for next month, whatever, I'm just throwing out things, because I don't want it to feel like you're getting beat up on right now because that's not the intent. Um, the board members get called all the time, board members go visit buildings, they come back, they talk about it, and so I just wanna, I'm just throwing ideas out there, that's it.
I'm picking up what you're putting down.
Okay.
And, um, feel free to, you know, give me that feedback because I, I'm here for it.
I'm, I'm in it every day, so I, I feel the people in the back.
Uh, moving on, um, we have two items. Um, I just wanted to give an update on our modernization projects throughout the district. Today, or actually last, two weeks ago, we sent out a bid advertisement for the projects going on at Harris and Sharon Hill. Actually, today was a pre-bid meeting, and bid openings will be on May seventh. The Academy Park Library is currently advertised, there will be a pre-bid walkthrough on The Academy Park Library is currently advertised. There will be a pre-bid walkthrough on April twenty-third with a May fourteenth bid opening. These are projects that I'm very proud of. We've worked with school administration and district administration over the last year to, um, really hone down what's going to take place in these spaces, and they're, they're, they look amazing. Some renderings came in that I'll be sharing soon to the board, uh, just to give you guys a sneak peek of what's coming. Also, there'll be, uh, some renovations here, and that's what you have in front of you. There's two layouts of the, uh, boardroom, um, just, uh, configuration purposes. I just would, uh, like to have your consideration and feedback, um, that you could provide to Dr. Sanchez. I know I, I kind of, uh, sprung it on him a couple of weeks ago, and we had a great discussion about it. And, you know, we'll be following up on that, but we do have the opportunity to possibly change the layout. I think it's been this way for quite a long time. And there's, we, we will have the ability to change things if, if need be. Um, I just want to make sure that we're not losing any functionality, um, while we update the spaces for everyone. So, uh, you know, you're, any questions?
Uh, the technology person to me. So we'll be having new, if, if it, if, if it's the board's pleasure, all new system.
Well, that's already in the works.
Okay. And this is getting taken out.
Yes.
And.
So we probably would, we'll be adding, uh, like, another project, or not projection, but another, like, TV that would probably be a lot larger.
I, I picked my two already.
Okay.
So are we getting the choice between these two designs? Is that what it is?
They're two, they're, they're, they're like the finalists, um, of what makes sense in this space. We looked at all our options and things kind of didn't really, uh, pan out, so they were the two best options.
If there's a vote, can I go for the one that would allow me to see the public without doing this?
Let me see if that's the one I put in the number one. That's the number one I put.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have a follow-up conversation on that. We have some other things going on in, in this building as well. But, um, we definitely would appreciate, uh, some feedback given to Dr. Sanchez over the next few weeks. And, uh, we'll let our, uh, architect team know, you know, what we're going to be, uh, going with. But we still have a few weeks to finalize some things before that project goes out to bid. And that's all I have tonight.
And, and just in, uh, addition to what Mr. Curry is saying, this recent document that was handed out is funded through our, uh, ESRS, uh, money. And, uh, as we get closer to September, uh, the modernization, modernization of the classrooms and, uh, there's also some, so, some other items, uh, that are, or other areas that will be modernized is in an effort to, one, enhance things and, two, uh, ensure that we're spending, uh, the funding, uh, that we receive from the government.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. You're doing a great job, though. I appreciate you. Policy back to Mr. Butler.
This is real quick, folks. Three policies that are on, uh, one is for. So we have, uh, three policies that are, uh, up for, uh, discussion or review. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Uh, three policies that are, that are being handed out and up for review. Uh, policy, uh, uh, two hundred, uh, I'm sorry.
Is orders?
Uh, two forty-nine is for bullying. Uh, Dr. Ryan has talked about this at, in past meetings. The other is, uh, policy nine oh-three, and that is in, uh, reference to, uh, I'm sorry, uh, oh, public comment, I'm sorry, public comments at board meetings. And then the new one that is in front of you is in reference to procurement cards. And this is as a result of, uh, a federal monitoring, uh, that we had a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and they suggested that, uh, we update our procurement card, uh, policy. Uh, I will tell you that, uh, we are not, um, uh, a fans of having necessarily procurement cards, so they're very limited. Uh, so the superintendent, myself, uh, assistant superintendent, and there is a, a card available for the board. Uh, they are, uh, cut securely and only used, uh, when necessary. Uh, so that is it. There are other districts that have a variety where, uh, buildings have procurement cards. We do not do that, uh, just because, uh, we don't, it's not necessary in this district to have that many procurement cards out.
Mr. Butler, can we just add the policy number to the bullying one? Cause it just says bullying. Can we add policy number two four nine to it?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Yes, on the, um, yes, not a problem.
Cause I know I asked.
Yes. Got it.
Okay, appreciate it. That's it.
That's it. Now we're gonna move on to sa, to safety. We'll put them on first next month.
Good evening. So I'll just have an up, an update on, uh, some of the work that we're doing in some of the schools. As the cameras get old and need to be replaced, uh, we've been working to replace some of the old an, analog cameras in the district. So Academy Park is scheduled to have seven cameras replaced. Darby Township, one. Harris, one camera. Sharon Hill, six cameras. As far as staffing goes, we, we hired one, um, guard for the high school. Mrs. Woolley had stated that it was for the kindergarten center, but it's actually for the, for the high school. So she'll be starting soon, uh, and other than that, I have nothing else. Any other questions? Sir, Mr. Butler?
Just the update on the, uh, alarm.
The door alarm system?
Yes, if you don't mind.
So the door alarm system is complete. Final testing is on the twenty-third. We've been testing for the last couple, the last day, uh, to make sure that everything goes through as far as the email alerts, and that is working. So that, that issue has been rectified. So we're hoping to go live next week sometime or possibly the following week on a Monday, just as a fresh start. But final testing will be on Tuesday. Anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're gonna move to public comments.
So I'd like to invite Serenity Wade to the mic.
So I just want to make sure that, um, that we, the policy for coming to the mic, you have three minutes. If you are a student, you just say, "I'm a student" at Academy Park, or who might, who might, where to say a student. And, um, you do not have to provide your address. If you are a resident, you must provide your first name, last name, and your residence. If you're an employee, you just state your name and you're an employee. If you want to say your building, you can, and you have three minutes. Thank you so much for coming.
Hi, my name is Serenity Wade. I'm a member of the tenth grade student council and the girls' track team at Academy Park. I'm here tonight on behalf of my team requesting, requesting that the girls' head coach be reinstated in that position and her job at Darby Township. The issue surrounding our coach has nothing to do with her and should not have impacted her as it does now. This impact not only affects her, but it throws our team roles off balance. With the boys' coaches having to take more responsib, responsibilities unexpectedly and the leaders of our team having to take on more pressure. Our coach's absence has greatly impacted the team's preparation, jeopardizing our chances to compete at districts due to, uh, due to of unprecedented challenges. Our coach has always put the track's, track team's best interest at heart since she first got hired two years ago. And it is imperative that the issue she's involved in be ended.
Thank you so much.
Um, now I'd like to invite, uh, Fatuma Kaya. Kaba.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fatima Kaba. I'm a senior student athlete at Academy Park. During the last few weeks, the girls' track team had a huge loss in staffing and is natural mental that this issue is resolved. I am advocating as a member and captain of the team and a student at the high school that our coach be reinstated. We have gone through numerous track meets with our head coach having a hand in our events and being there to help us. Under her coaching, me and my teammate Kyla was able to qualify and compete at track nationals, outdoor New Balance, and indoor Adidas. On top of the sand pit at the track being unable to efficiently be trained on, losing our coach, we are wrongly entered into several events as well as some athletes not being able to enter at all and missing the opportunity to compete with an already short season. We have our boys' coaches working extra with us with no extra pay to make sure that the girls' team is taken care of. While administration is deep in an issue that isn't apparent to us. Championship season is days away after Penn relays, which is next Thursday. And we need our staffing to be present while we prepare for the meets after the regular season is over. My coach is being wrongly punished for an issue that she didn't instigate and was not aware of. I believe if there is an issue, she would have been take, she would have taken the steps herself to resolve and report if needed. We had an adult with us who created a huge issue out of nothing, reporting two lays later, my I A, and she received no consequences and everything has to fall on us. Again, I'm advocating for the immediate reinstatement of our coach to ensure that the rest of our season is not thrown away. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Margaret Rogers, Ben?
Good evening. I'm gonna try to keep it in this three minutes, but I need you guys to understand that this is a student safety issue that I have. I'm from Glen Olden, uh, also secretary at Darby Township School. So on April ninth, I am, as a secretary, noticing that our middle school track team, they were left to sit outside on the front steps because they were supposed to have a track meet. And they were waiting for a bus to pick them up as I'm calling dismissal. As I'm calling dismissal, buses are leaving that some of them probably should be getting on. They're waiting to go to their track meet, and then we find out that they can't get there. I also would like to know if this is the commu, uh, committee of the whole, I should just let off with this. This is the committee of the whole, and everybody's giving a, um, account of their individual department. How come the athletic director never comes and is never here? That I do have a question about. Also, on April eleventh, an email was sent about track middle school. Said students would start getting picked up at one thirty. The boys and girls were outside waiting again to get picked up. Excuse me, once again, while dismissal was going on. Ms. Bright called me stating not to dismiss the track team because transportation didn't come yet. The kids were confused and the meet was cancel, and they were confused about if the meet was canceled. Parents were already on their way to the meet and kids had missed buses to get home because they were waiting for track once again. That's not safe to have a whole bunch of kids sitting outside waiting. And they're telling their parents they're going to be somewhere and they're going to go somewhere. Meanwhile, the transportation that they would regularly have to go home is not there because their situation, their schedule is not set up correct or the communication isn't done correctly. As a parent, this past Monday, this had me really hot. The high school had a tennis match, which my son plays in. He was all the way in Norristown. Left at one something, two o'clock for the match from the high school. They got to Norristown and they were, found out that Norristown was playing a whole different team. So they waited for their matches to finish. The coaches knew each other. They worked something out so the kids can play. Do y'all all know that it was eighty-some degrees outside that day? Them kids sat through that heat after eating or not eating and waiting and doing whatever they were doing in the heat outside, no food. They can't go anywhere to get anything. My son did not get home until nine o'clock at night. Do you know how hot I was? And if I would have known about what was going on, I would have been on some people's phones, letting people know immediately about what was going on. This athletic situation is a sham. And it's a black eye on the school district because we can't get our stuff together. This has to, the, the kids are suffering, the district looks bad. I, this needs to be addressed. Thank you so much. Oh, and I just want to say one more thing. I couldn't get a resolution to an issue that I had prior, so I'm gonna say this. I had an issue back in November. Came to my attention some very unsavory and, and, and slanderous things were said about me. I'm just gonna say this here at this mic, on this, on this video, for the record, on the record, and let the record reflect. I do not bank at a check cashing place. Thank you so much.
A, actually, I had a, no, I just had a question about. I just had a quick question, uh, Ms. Bing. Did the kids eventually get picked up? From, you said that the, no, no, from the kids that were at DTS on April ninth? So they never attended the? So. So the kids did not participate in that track meet because they were still at the school? And they couldn't get home because they had already missed the bus to go home? Okay, thank you.
So Ki, Kiara Bright? And Kiasa Cunningham? Kiasia? Is one of you a student? The other one is a staff?
Yeah, she's a student, I'm staff.
Okay, thank you. Can we have the student speak first?
Yeah, um, is it all right if I speak on her behalf? She's kind of worn and nervous at the moment.
Absolutely, but we would definitely would love to hear you speak as well.
Um, I'll try to get her to toward the end, but, um, this is written in her point of view, of course. Good evening. My name is Kyla Bright, and I'm a junior student athlete at Academy Park. As a year-round athlete, I've had my talent developed by various staff in the district. I have qualified for district since the ninth grade and have taken home many accolades from track in particular. I am advocating for our coach's immediate reinstatement to the team so that she is able to continue to share her knowledge and create opportunities for myself and other athletes on the team. District is a month away, and instead of trying to prepare, there are misplaced efforts toward a situation that didn't occur. Leaving everything to fall solely on the girls' team would be a gross injustice while the person that has created the issue continues to drive the same team that she complained about. And I hope those in charge will have compassion to restate our coach so that we can continue to have a successful season. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing that on her behalf. Patrick McGowan?
Patrick McGowan, Sharon Hill. Originally I was, hasn't been three minutes yet. Uh, originally I was gonna talk about, uh, after prom. I'm only gonna say real briefly, I want to clarify and question, Miss President or somebody can answer me, you suggested about the five thousand dollars and in conjunction with the teacher's steps is why you feel uncomfortable. If I was correct from the past meetings, I know this year's budget for, uh, the steps was going to be covered by some type of grant. So if that grant was received, which I don't know if it was, wouldn't that negate the money coming out of our budget this year? That would ne, that would have you pause for the five thousand dollars coming out of this year's budget? That's something for you all to talk about. Um, that's something that you said tonight that you felt uncomfortable about that, which I get. But if it's coming out of a grant money, it's really shouldn't affect that five thousand dollars anyway. But that's, and I already said most of my after-prom stuff in the audience. But I do have a question about the budget because I'm a little confused by what Mr. Butler presented. Did we? Did we raise taxes last year, yes or no?
No, we did not.
Then I do have a question, on the district website, under the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four final, I think, general fund, it's a document, PDF document, there's a question in here that says, "Did you raise property taxes in school year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four compared to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three?" The checkbox is yes. So I'm kind of confused, and this document is signed by, at the time, Dr. Winder, I believe also, the board president in September signed it, and I believe also you signed it, Mr. Butler.
Yeah, I would have signed it, I'll look at that document.
So it's a little confusing and quite honestly problematic for me to look at these figures that you're putting up here now, the zero percent increase from last year, when there's a published document with signatures, which I would assume submitted to the state. It says you did raise taxes. So it's a little, so this is something that amongst you all may want to figure out.
Well, I think it would be my responsibility to figure that out.
So, and then the last thing, as you were talking about service master, I'm a big, big person about KPIs. If you want to see, and first of all, I can tell you, there are a couple of trashcans that I know for a fact that they haven't cleaned out because I'm still looking at the St. Duck and Donuts trash underneath the trash bag and I refuse to clean a trashcan that is that disgusting, we literally take it out in the hallway. But why not set up KPIs? If there's this log that you guys take, you know, complaints on, say every month, go, okay, how many were logged in for this month and how many were logged in for this month? Then before the contract is over, you can look at it and go, well, you're operating at a ninety-five percent proficiency, you know, and our KPI says it should be at ninety-eight percent. That's one good way to look at it. But to what Madam President was saying, I know for a fact that teachers get disenfranchised and not reported after a while. That's just common sense, but that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. There is no more comments at this time.
Can I just make a quick?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to invite everyone to come out, tomorrow night is open.
Your time is up.
Tomorrow night is the opening of the district musical, I just want to invite everyone out. It's a good show, it's Shrek, and you will actually see staff members as well participating. So grab your tickets, it's this weekend, it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday next weekend. Tickets are ten dollars at the door, make sure you get yourselves a good seat and enjoy the show.
Thank you. Also, I had some, it was some good information when I went to back to school night at Academy Park last night. There is a scholarship for Ethan Jonas Foundation. Unfortunately, our students are not applying for it. You don't have to write an essay, you can do a video essay, I mean, application. But only four people, she told me, applied to it. So can we make sure that we get some seniors to apply for this free, twenty-seven hundred dollars? Because right now, some eleven graders want to apply for it. So it's due May first, okay, so let's make sure we get our summer seniors. I'm, I'm, I'm just putting it out there. Because I went to back to school night yesterday and saw the flyer, so. They're asking really like, put it out there for them, so I told them I would do that. I think that's a good, it's a good thing and everyone needs money to go to school. Or, and they even are allowing students to use it for trade school. So if they decide they don't want to go to a university or a college, if they decide to go into a trade, they can also receive this money as well. So I thought that was a good way of encapsulizing everyone at the district level. At this time, our board business meeting will be Thursday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four at seven PM. Committee of the whole will be Thursday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at six PM. School board business will be Thursday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four at seven PM. Board members, I'm asking you to stay for a little bit. And thank you for coming out, please drive safely home.
Can I add something about the scholarships?
Sure.
So about the Ethan Jonas Memorial Scholarship, just so students are aware, it is not grade-based. You don't need to be that three-point-five, four-point-oh student. It is more about community service, being an athlete, giving back to your neighborhood, being a school leader and contributing to the school community. It'll be twenty-seven hundred dollars every year, except for the year that Ethan was supposed to graduate, which will be twenty twenty-six. It will be twenty-seven thousand that year. And actually, next Saturday, the twenty-seventh, in Collingdale Park, the Ethan Jonas Memorial Foundation will be holding a wiffle ball tournament fundraiser for that scholarship program. And you can still put your teams in, teams of three or five and any age group are welcome. And it's at Collingdale Park, starting at nine AM.
Thank you, Vice President Perry, at this point, we are adjourned, please drive safely, have a great night.